Oops, welcome to the Boiling Point Podcast. Always forget to bring my live screen down. Welcome to the Boiling Point Podcast. We are awaiting the start of the West Shore School District School Board Meeting for February 20th. I am your host JD alongside parents in the West Shore School District, Brandy.
Hi.
And the Boiling Point Podcast contributor Denise. And also, you're a parent of the West Shore School District, right, too Denise?
Um, my children both went to West Shore District and I have a grandchild now.
And it doesn't, regardless, it doesn't matter if you live in the school district and you have a right to be heard and to attend the school board meetings. You know, if you pay taxes, you get to represent yourself. That's how this country works. I didn't know if anybody was familiar with the founding of it. Just in case any of our viewers aren't familiar with the founding of this country.
Yes, we have a right to, you know, go to our representatives for redress of grievances, you know, and we contribute and things are to be a benefit to us. That's why we originally instituted government. So it's very simple. Um, but they have conflated it and made it very complicated. And you know, that's just, that's okay. We got lots of good reform ahead of us. So. We're just still on the thick of it.
And it's a shame too, that we've reached the point where the media doesn't even do necessarily their job.
Uh, no, no.
That's why I'm here now.
And thankfully you are.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm grateful for that because you know, I wouldn't be, I likely wouldn't be here doing this right now. If it wasn't for the fact that local news stations and stuff aren't covering anything going on with the school boards at all.
How true, how true. It's a good way to look at it because it gives, you know, you an opportunity to give, you know, yourself a platform and. You know, the subjects that are, you know, the people that are coming to you in need of, you know.
Yeah.
Truth out and the, and the facts and you know, the law, all of it. So.
And the parents come on and they don't have to worry about, you know, what they say being cut down and chopped up to a 10 second soundbite.
Yeah, that's. Unless you're, you know, have another, another agenda that aligns, then you usually.
Exactly. Yes.
More, you know.
Yes, then you get the platform. That's right.
Exactly.
We're talking about you pen live, talking about you pen live. Boiling Point Podcast is coming.
I mean, I have found very few independent, like consistent, um, journalists and a couple of them. Have newsletters, they're on Twitter X. I can't get used to the, the X part, but anyway, um. You know, like Spotlight PA is a good one. Um, they. You know, report about, you know, the budgetary things, just things that come down the line that are, you know, very typical for our political.
Yeah.
System, uh, elections and such, but they, they give, you know, the fair reporting. So there's not, um, like just the facts. So.
Yeah. I hope we're gonna, I hope we're gonna be able to help out with, uh, some of the, uh, election campaign. I mean, not help out, but give some of the people running a platform to, to talk about. Stuff for this election season. So I'm hoping we can get some of the people running on.
Mm hmm. I hope so too, because you know, they need to get their message out. And I know the main, we know the main media.
Sandra Gonzalez is running, right? She's running.
Yep, yep.
Just in case anybody needs to know that, uh, the Boiling Point Podcast officially has endorsed Sandra Gonzalez for our school board meeting or school board.
Director.
Board position. Oh, director. Okay.
Is that for region one, Brandy?
I'm not sure.
I'm not a hundred percent either.
Isn't she going after Geiswitz?
That's what, um.
Um, yeah. So that may.
Yeah.
Region one. Um, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, excellent, Brandy. I love that. She's gonna look it up. That's.
There you go. You're on it. Um.
Um, Sandra or Denise, I'm sorry. I'm totally.
That's okay. They're just talking.
He's region three.
Region three.
Okay, okay.
That's what I was gonna say, but I thought I was, I thought that was wrong. So I should have just.
Yeah, I didn't think I was right. So thanks for looking it up.
What are we expecting tonight? They're about to go live here. Uh, they should be going live any minute and, uh, they're gonna do the pledge of allegiance, et cetera. And we won't, I'm not, at least I won't, I won't speak during the opening and while they're doing the national anthem and the.
No.
That, but what else are we expecting tonight?
Um.
Are we looking for anything specific?
Well, I was looking at business item seven J about special education, about settlement. Um, because I didn't really see anything.
There we go.
Meeting. The West Shore School District is committed to fostering a secure and welcoming environment for our schools that encourages participation from students.
This is a new layout. This is not how we normally look at the school board.
I call this meeting to order. Prior to tonight's public meeting, an executive session took place.
That picture back there is a little bit starving. I mean, is it dark? Are you guys?
Hold on. All other electronic devices to prevent any disruption during this meeting.
Whatever that picture is behind Geiswitz, a little, uh.
Oh, there we go. So again, more evidence that someone is actually controlling this camera. I again extend my services to the West Shore School District, put me in charge of running the camera.
Mrs. Thomas.
And we will get the parents, the people will get the kind of coverage on these meetings that they want. And then I won't have to do this. I could just run your thing, your cameras for you. Think of what kind of credibility that would bring you, West Shore School District.
For the national anthem performed by Redland High School.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The precision of those kids with the, in the uniforms.
Oh, that's. This evening's color guard is from Redland High School comprised of junior Michael Hall, sophomores Livy Donnelly and Jackson Forkowski. With freshman Hunter Shelley. Mrs. Herbert, would you like to tell us who, uh, our flutists were tonight?
I'll let, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Wonderful.
Of course, we can't hear them.
Thank you very much.
We can't hear them all. So fortunately we don't.
You did a great job tonight.
They did a great job. Absolutely. The kids playing the national anthem and the, uh, the kids of you.
Next is recognition by the board. Anyone?
President, it's the student speakers.
Let's, uh, let's big box it.
Um, I'm sorry.
Viewers can see.
Redland Senior Aiden Lee.
And I'm working for an overlay to put up on the screen for anybody tuning in or, or watching this later on. I'm going to, we're going to have an overlay so that we can see. Uh, so you can see who is sitting where.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and community. My name is Aiden Lee, a senior at Redland and also Gomez in the Addams Family Musical. I'd first like to thank you all for allowing me to present, and I would also like to thank Mrs. McGowan and Mrs. Shevsky for bringing this opportunity for me to speak. I come to you all not only to talk about why you should all come see the Addams Family Musical, but also why theater is such an impactful institution at our school. First of all, the Addams Family, please come see it. Uh, if you haven't heard of the Addams Family, you've probably heard their jingle. Ba da da da, ba da da da, ba da da da, da 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 da, da 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 da. It involves the eccentric and reclusive family everyone loves that can be described from deadly to outright zany. The story surrounds Gomez keeping a secret of his daughter getting married from his wife Morticia, played by Mara DuVall. It has been such an exhilarating experience to be a part of and probably one of my favorites out of all the shows I've been. My castmates and I have put countless hours of dancing, acting, singing, painting and building in the staging of this show, and we think it has a lot of potential to be the, one of the best we've had. We brought this strange cast of characters into people that you could actually imagine being bewildered by if you saw them walking down the street. So much so, in fact, that you probably have, you might've actually seen us walk across the street at our meeting greet at the West Shore Theater or the character breakfast we had at Redland last week. Even Lurch, played by Micah Takafuji, towers above the whole cast and strikes pure fear into you if you stare into his half-dead, half-alive eyes. We have transformed our blank canvas of a stage into an entire house with multiple floors, secrets, torture chambers, and what have yous. We have filled the space with sword fights, interfamilial drama, and even a tango. This show is just jam-packed with morose laughter and faux horror that is simply a must-see. Now, you may have noticed I have never used I when referring to the putting together of the show. And that is because it is not a one-man show, just as I am not the face of the Addams Family at Redland High School. It is a whole group and community effort. Our cast and crew of 54 people guided by our directors, Mrs. Shevsky, Mr. Tim Crane, Mrs. Allison Maury, and Mrs. Ghost have had to congeal together into one unified group. And to set aside our differences to make this show a.
Jonathan, are you there?
That I feel is one of the most.
Yeah, I'm here.
Things about theater and.
Okay, you're, both your pictures disappeared.
I, um, I, I big boxed it.
Oh, okay.
This culture and community that we have.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure that.
And to me at least.
It's hard to say the school board members. So I like to keep them big, big box from where actually in the meeting. Like I said, I'm gonna get an overlay so that we can see who's gonna be speaking and where they're sitting and stuff. We hope to have that for next month's meeting.
And it has been one of the most, biggest improvements to my life ever since.
Yeah, definitely to their advantage.
And eventually get involved in more and more activities.
That's for sure.
Community that theater was and still is to me. Every show that passed, I become more and more the person you see today. It's he here today and to someone who is actually talking to the West Shore School District.
I actually like theater. You guys like theater?
Yeah, it's not bad.
Truly change it for the better.
I haven't really gone to too many theater shows.
Some, it depends.
Very, 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 very few actually, but, uh, I mean, I obviously it would have to be the right show. I'm not saying that I like all theater, but I, I did enjoy that a couple of times I, I've been. They were good shows as well. I'd like to throw that out. And I would say that I probably wouldn't have the appreciation for it wasn't for the kid, like when I was in school, them putting on stuff like that when I was in school and then having the kids, you know, watch it and stuff. So.
Thank you.
I'm all for theater in schools.
Mrs. Brent, sorry to interrupt here, but if I may, uh, this is for Aiden's sake. Uh, if you may remember him from the holiday card contest, he has continued to have quite the senior year because we started out being homecoming king. We went to ABC 27 for the last musical. We won the holiday card contest and now we're here speaking to the board again tonight. So congratulations him for that. Um, members of the Addams Family were on ABC 27, Good Day PA this morning and, um, my alma mater Fox 43 will be visiting on Monday morning. So make sure to tune in for that to see, uh, the cast members being interviewed there too. So. I just wanted to give Aiden and the team a shout out there to where, uh, folks can see them again too. So thank you very much.
Way to overachieve.
Hey, you guys are, uh, yeah, it's a good use. We don't, I don't, oh yeah, because of the whole weed.
But there's more.
We the district.
Maybe you want to have a seat, um, cause you, you did a great job tonight in not using I and not talking about others. You spent a lot of time talking about the show, but, um. I am interested. I don't want to assume. I don't know if the Cornell shirt that you have on tonight has anything to do with your post-secondary plans or if that's just, uh, what came out of the closet today, but. Uh, I'd like to hear a little bit about what you plan to do after high school this year.
Um, so, uh, unfortunately I'm not applying to Cornell. I did visit, but I just didn't like the, uh, the vibe of it. It was very rainy. Um, but I, I am planning to enroll at a four-year institution for electrical engineering. Uh, I don't know where exactly to enroll at yet. I'm still waiting for some more decisions to come back in March. Um, but right now I've been accepted to, I believe, 10 or 11 schools, I believe. I'm waiting, I believe, on MIT, Princeton, University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, and Bucknow, I believe. Yes, those four. And I've been accepted to, um, a few other schools. So I'm really just waiting to get all my options and, uh, make a, the best choice that I can.
Good. I mean, that, that, that's amazing. I mean, that's an impressive list of schools. Who needs Cornell? I don't have any other questions for you. It's been a pleasure to have you out here tonight. Um, we're happy for your progress and, and everything that you've done and worked hard to do. I mean. Um, I, I have the benefit of being able to look at Power School and, and just know other stories about you, but that doesn't come without hard work. Um, and, and dedication to things, whether it's theater or whether it's academic study. So best of luck to you. That's all I have tonight, Mrs. Brent. I don't know if anybody else has any.
Aiden, we can usually tell right away when I can, when a kid's had the opportunity to do theater and how they present. Um, it clearly has left an impression on you and, and you've developed a ton of skills. Just your presentation today was fantastic. So. Proud to hear about what's gonna happen next with you.
Thank you.
Don't overlook the intersection between theater and electrical engineering. There are amazing opportunities there too.
Wow, that fell flat. That last. How flat? Are you serious?
Cedar Cliff Senior.
Sweetly in a miss, strike blind. Who is that that's in the corner there? Brandy?
Abigail Tierney.
Abigail Tierney, that's right.
Welcome Zoe.
I want to start off by saying thank you to Mr. Miller and the school board for giving me the opportunity to share my personal journey of starting at Cumberland Perry Vocational School my freshman year. Graduating my junior year with a cosmetology license and stepping into my career field as a senior in high school. This experience has been filled with growth, challenges, and many accomplishments. Graduating as a junior with my cosmetology license was a monumental achievement. It required dedication and countless hours of practice. Throughout the journey, I learned the importance of time management and balancing my academic responsibilities with my VOTEC responsibilities. When I was in eighth grade towards the end of the year, they started talking to us about the opportunities we could get with VOTEC and all the different programs they offer. As an eighth grade student, I was unsure of what I wanted to do, just as everyone else my age. However, my passion for beauty and creativity led me to choose the cosmetology program. Choosing to attend VOTEC as a freshman was different for me considering almost all students start as a sophomore, but in the end I'm very grateful for the decision my eighth grade self-made. Learning VOTEC as a freshman has allowed me to have many accomplishments not many teenagers have. I am currently a part of co-op, meaning I go to Cedar Cliff from 7:30 to 9:30 in the morning and attend work the rest of the day. Throughout the three years I attended VOTEC, I learned all of the important factors in the cosmetology industry. Such as state board laws, sanitation, salon requirements, client consultations, color theory, and so on. To complete the cosmetology program, you need a total of 1,250 hours. At the end of first year, you are supposed to finish with around 300 hours. Second year, you end around 900 and third year, you are expected to finish with the full 1,250 hours. On Fridays, we would have the public come in to get whatever services they would want done by us with the understanding that we were students that are still learning. Our instructors would rotate who would get clients for certain weeks depending on if we were caught up on work and whether it has been a while since we last had a client or not. My sophomore year at VOTEC, we were offered to participate in the pilot program. The pilot program is where you work in a salon or job that relates to the industry as, and as you work at that job, say you work for five hours, those five hours get clocked onto your school hours that go towards the total 1,250 hours. I took this opportunity right away and found a salon near my house and started working there. This allowed me to complete the full amount of hours in February of my junior year. I was the first in my level to finish all of the required hours. Once you complete your hours, the main thing you have to focus on is the state board test. This is a test that allows you to become a licensed cosmetologist. I scheduled my test for April so I could allow myself plenty time of time to study. When I completed my theory and floorwork for the day, my instructor would always allow me to go and study to prepare myself for the 115 question test. The studying for sure paid off considering I passed my test the first time I took it. April 5th is when I became a state board licensed cosmetologist. This was just under two months prior to graduation from VOTEC. I was the second in my class to become licensed. The moment I received my license was surreal. It felt like all my hard work had finally paid off. It was not just a piece of paper. It showed all of my skills and my readiness to enter the professional world. After I finished, there was not much need for me to keep going to VOTEC since I already completed the program. So I went on co-op. I still kept going to VOTEC every Wednesday, but other days I would go to work instead. Come time in May, we had our graduation towards the end of the month. This is when I realized I completed the program as a junior and while most people were graduating from their sending school as well. I still had a year of high school left. Over the summer, I took a new job as a salon assistant at Spontacular Escapes. This position really allowed me to see what the real industry is like. I got to help with clients, learn new techniques and many more things about the environment as well. Later on, around November, I started taking clients of my own. Many of my clients come to be surprised as I tell them I'm still a senior in high school. And they are amazed by all that I have already done to be working on the floor and having my cosmetology license at my age. While managing school as well, I only had a total of five credits to complete, which were all core classes. My first semester I took three classes and in the second semester I'm currently taking two. I knew from the start that I did not want to be at Cedar Cliff all day my senior year from being behind in credits due to only taking three classes after VOTEC freshman through junior year. So I took advantage of the free online summer classes every summer leading up to my senior year. I took two gym classes as well as social studies and science classes too, so that I could be on track with all of my credits. Without the opportunity to start VOTEC as a freshman, I would have never gotten the jumpstart in my career that I did. Looking back, I realize how fortunate I am to have had the opportunity to start my journey in cosmetology as early as I did. I love being able to work in my career field as a 17-year-old because I learn and grow more and more every day. And I cannot wait to become a full-time hairstylist once I graduate high school.
That's a big, deep breath worthy. Um, I can't tell you how proud I am of you.
Thank you.
I can't tell you how much I love your hair.
Zoe, you said such a number of things that for me personally, you know, hit passion points of, of what I think we've tried to do over the last 10 years. Going to, going to VOTEC as a freshman, right? We're, we're.
Who's talking over there on the left?
That's doing that any longer. Um, and something that I believe is.
The superintendent.
It's important because there are some kids, and I'm not suggesting this was you, but I just think there are some kids that need that opportunity to stay engaged in high school. The second thing is that you got into a really competitive program. Cosmetology is, is a very popular program.
I also graduated VOTEC.
Let alone do that as a freshman. Getting your hours done, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that has a cosmetology license, but there is no forgiveness for 1,250 hours. There is no forgiveness for, it was a snow day and we canceled school or you didn't feel well. 1,250 is 1,250. That's the requirement. Um, and you got that done and you got it done before the end of your junior year. I actually had a verbal outburst when you said, in order to put yourself in a position to only have to take two courses. Um, here at Cedar Cliff, uh, especially this semester, that you did the summer, the free summer online learning opportunities that we provided. You know, it's part of our summer programming and we put those things out there and, and I, and, and I know that there are many students like you that take advantage of that and do that. And you can see a pathway forward for setting yourself up for something beyond graduation. I looked it up because I thought the place you're working is the one right across from VOTEC.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is like, so if you ever get up that way, that's a, a relatively new.
I do think that what they're talking about, like and what they're doing with this. I do think that what they're talking about, like, and what they're doing with this room here is important. I mean, I graduated high school and didn't know what the hell I was going to do. They did not have good things, Cumberland Valley did not have, I mean, they had great things in there for like assistance, you know, I had everything I needed while I was at school and stuff, but there was nothing really to lead me into beyond that, like, except unless I go to college, which I absolutely did not want to go to college. It wasn't, it wasn't gonna happen.
Yeah, I didn't either.
It just wasn't, it just wasn't
I wanted to do VOTEC.
For me, someone, I mean, yeah, it just wasn't going to happen like that for me. It wasn't going to happen.
That's Geist White.
What's his position? See, I have like, Kelly Brent is the president. I assume that there's a vice president somewhere.
Mandy, sitting to her left.
Yeah, in the gray sweater.
You need to our, our left, her right.
Her right.
Yeah, the other right.
And who's to her left?
If you open up your own salon, you can, you know, become a salon manager.
Who's that? He's a school board member?
He's just a school board member, yeah.
Parents are the owners of the whole building, so it just depends on how long you've been in the career, and if you're like, you're able to take that position.
So, so basically, the more, the more time you've spent, the quicker you can become that manager. So you've already got, you know, you're, you're not even graduated yet, and you're, you have all this experience as a professional cosmetologist. That's, that's awesome. That's amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Zoe, one last thought that I had is, I don't know whether, nobody knows whether this will be your career for fifty years or not, but I know a number of people, in fact, we had a former board member here, um, uh, who, I, she didn't travel the same path you did, but she was a, a CTC cosmetology graduate. She still cuts hair today. She has a regular full-time job as well. But I guess what I'm gonna say is, I know a number of people that have that cosmetology license. You have a credential that very likely would mean that you'll never go broke, right?
That's true.
You will always, no matter what you do, you will always have a skill that can't easily be replaced.
Trade should be something that, that should be something, that should be more what high school is. High school should be about, actually, middle school should be about teaching kids a trade, something that they can do that will, that will, that they can benefit from their entire life. It's not gonna depend on the job market, because everybody needs it all the time. And that high school should be more about whatever you want your career to be and finding that path. There's too much, what I find so funny about this is the way that so many school board members and superintendent, they really like this part of the meeting. You know, they really like to, they really like to fluff. I don't wanna, I'm not trying to be rude to this, uh, to this girl, but I'm going to mute her to the, on the stream for just a moment. Um, oh, we got comments. Oh, no, they're my comments trying to bring people in. They really like this, the, the, the fluff.
Yes, they're always very much about, oh, look at us, look, look what we have, and meanwhile, they're drowning in so many other areas.
Yeah. Yeah, they really like this section, but they don't, they fight things that make their school more about what they like right here. Isn't that, that's just so crazy to me.
Zoe, just to echo, I, I know less about cosmetology than even Mr. Geist White, and I was gonna make a joke about how important hair is, right, Mr. Gay? I, I am so blown away that as an eighth grader, you are able to have the vision, make the plan.
Who's that?
Adam Throne.
That just underscores so much about you. I won't tell you what I was thinking about in eighth grade, but it certainly was not a career pathway, so just kudos to you and your perseverance and being able to see
Do either of you know how many, like, how much more student fluff they have coming up?
Super impressive.
Then we have these too.
Okay.
I, I guess my last thing, I, I'm hearing that Silver is in?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, she worked really hard.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't, absolutely don't have a problem with this. I think this is great, but I just think it's funny that
We're, you know, thirty-five minutes in.
I just want to congratulate all of the boy, men, young men, who qualified to move on in wrestling, and as well as the young ladies that qualified to move on in the wrestling competition this year. Uh, so, uh, go get them.
Again, I don't have a problem with student recognition and stuff like that. I think it's good.
Anyone, Mr. Throne?
Uh, very quickly, wanted to take a shout out, um, to the West Shore Foundation, West Shore Education Association. Last night was a public screening of a, it was called My Extension, and I, I really also want to give a shout out to Mrs. Robin Goudy, who facilitated or was on the panel. It, it was very, uh, I mean, obviously very well done, very reflective. There was not a dry eye in the house. Uh, I think I lost four pounds of tears, and I think at one point, Dr. Stoltz was in front of me, and some of my tears got onto his shoulder.
What?
It was a, a
Yeah, that was my thought.
But, uh, a lot of, uh, you know, a, a lot of ideas for how not just schools have a minor role, but
Oh, I, I knew exactly where, what I was gonna say next and where I was gonna take the show, and then I heard that, and now I have no, that's it.
Our students are telling us something, and we have to listen, so
Just, it's gone.
I have, sorry, I had to let it out.
I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't know.
I'm sorry, humor is what gets us through. I can imagine Mariana and Kristi.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's Mariana and Casey, they're not with us tonight. They can't join us tonight because they are there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So
Well, because the other policy wasn't on the agenda, I decided to stay back.
I'm happy, I, I mean, I like when everybody, you know, show up, you know, when you gotta show up, of course, showing up is better than this. But I am grateful that at least two of you did not go to the meeting so that you could join me here.
No, this is good for us to engage with each other and just
I hope we get a couple more viewers. I'm, 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 what I'm thinking right now is that we're not getting a lot of viewers.
Yeah.
Because they're all there.
Thank you very much.
I'm hoping that normally, yeah.
They don't show us much of anything in the audience.
Yeah, we don't know who's, yeah, we can't see how full it is. I mean, I'm just saying, normally, you don't see so many people's legs and stuff in the front like this. So it looks like it's a little bit more on the full side, perhaps. So I'm hoping that maybe that's why, just some of the people who normally tune in and share us out are, are at the meeting right now, because, yeah, we have not had too many viewers. Leave a comment if you are watching, uh, our live stream. I also want to say with the exception, who's talking right now?
Mandy Davis.
Mandy Davis, she's the vice president, right?
Yes.
Madam Vice President, turn on the microphone and speak into it, please.
Yeah, she's low, low.
That's the other thing that I want to just bring up. Have you noticed Denise? Except for right now, we have not really had too much trouble hearing them tonight. They're all
I know, isn't that interesting?
Is that interesting how I've been saying that for a few weeks, how they need to speak into the microphone so that people can hear them, and now they're all practically speaking into the microphone so that we can hear them? I would like to say thank you to all the school board members who are speaking into the microphone so that we can hear you. It does make it much easier, all right? I'm not a total complete jerk.
I mean
I appreciate that you are speaking into the microphone. I don't, still don't care for what you're saying.
We shouldn't have the bagdad speaking to the microphone or that, you know, it's a matter of principle.
I, I look at it, Denise, as maybe they just don't, maybe they don't know that the microphone doesn't pick them up unless it's that close. I, I'm willing to give everybody the benefit of the doubt, and they're all speaking into the microphone now, so let's take it as, let's take it as a victory.
Okay, I mean, well, I am.
Most of them have been doing this long enough to know and have heard a lot of us complain about them not talking.
Oh, okay, see, yeah, okay, see, so
That's why I was a little pessimistic, but I, it is better. It is better, so
Okay, so it wasn't until we started asking them here on the Boiling Point Podcast, they actually started doing it. Gotcha.
I'm sure I'll get more emails, but this is who emailed me, emailed me last night. I have, um, an update from Crossroads. Um, they will be celebrating the facility dog's birthday next week, and this is so cute. Chi is turning four.
Right, they're still talking fluff. Uh, listen, I love, like, we do this for, for public record keeping and stuff, but, you know, there's a little bit much. We just lost Brandy for a second. Hopefully she'll be back in a minute.
Okay. Yeah, this is how they wear pairs out and why many stop coming because they do the
I know, we're forty minutes in. We haven't gotten anything. Like I, like I said, there's nothing wrong with the, the student stuff. I don't, I don't have a problem with the student stuff. I do think it's important. Yeah, yeah, but
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, we should, we should be moving into policy right after that. It should be policy, and then whatever other stuff there is should be at the end.
Um, and they've had excellent attendance. They've had incredible presentations. Today's presentation
I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, but I don't mean to talk over you, but we really, I, I can't hear you.
I can't hear her well.
And also, I'd like to point out that I just did, we just, I just, the Boiling Point Podcast just did, uh, Northerns. Meeting, and they don't, they don't even livestream. They don't have, they don't have hardly any microphones or anything.
How is that legal? They have to have a public record of it.
Public minutes, Denise, public minutes.
Oh, that's how they get around it. That's
Public minutes.
Like, they can't be edited. That's not cool.
You just gave me a great idea, Denise. If the Boiling Point Podcast ever reaches a point where we're, uh, we're hiring interns, that is a great job for an intern. I can send them to schools. And they can audit the school board minutes.
Yeah, we need independent auditors for sure, of all sorts.
I, I, I'd volunteer for that, but I'm one guy and I
I know.
You'd have to, you'd have to drive, Denise, you have to drive a dump truck down my road that's packed to the top with cash.
Right. Yeah, it would, it would take a lot.
Who is the mother, she lost a, a child to suicide about ten years ago. Uh, Erica Stifler, one of our social workers, and then members from, uh, Cumberland Perry, um, Mental Health, uh, MHIDD, uh, uh, agency, uh, were there as part of that. Uh, this past Saturday, members of the West Shore Marching Band's percussion drill team earned first place in the Scholastic A category at the Keystone Indoor Drill Association's competition held at Lower Doffin High School, earning a score of seventy-one point three five. The group will continue to perform, perform throughout February and March, uh, and Redland High School will host competition on Saturday, March twenty-second. If you'd like to see some and listen to a dynamic, unique routine, mark your calendars now. Then lastly, something I did mention at last week's board meeting, Washington Heights Elementary observed National Read Aloud Day on Friday, February seventh. Members of the district community and administration gathered to read to students to highlight the importance of sharing stories and the benefits of reading. We thank those who took time out of their day to serve our children and their imagination. And just one final note, it, we heard about, um, One School, One Book. We've heard about that on, on a couple of recent visits and, uh, National Read Aloud Day, lots of things to promote literacy, uh, particularly at our elementary schools. Thank, thank you to all of our staff members and community members who, who are, uh, participate in that.
Thank you.
Okay, so after Zoe, we were supposed to go to recognition of the public, not let them speak for another ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. There we go.
Comment provides an opportunity for our community to address the board. Each speaker will be allotted four minutes. The board will listen to comments from individuals who have filled out
Enter Casey Reed. Um, I'd just like to point out that if you're wondering why, uh, because Mariana and Casey are there, that's why Mariana's not on here with us. Uh, and if you're wondering why Mariana is not going to be the one to speak, I believe it's because Casey and every single other person sitting in that room will not let her.
Right. Oh, no, she's, she's on the mend of, uh, sinus stuff too, so
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, yes, I know that she's been sick, and I'm glad that she's feeling better and good enough to be there. Uh, I still think it's
It's good for the men to, to speak to because we don't
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Okay, here we go.
Here we go.
All right, we'll be quiet. Let's, let's send it off.
In policy committee today, you all were talking about the attendance, and I know that has to be challenging for you. You're talking about, uh, after six absences requiring a doctor's note, and I want you to know, I know parents that send their kids to school with a fever, throwing up, knowing that the nurse will send them home by about nine thirty, and then they don't got to deal with, uh, absentee on their, uh, child's docket, because they don't want to have to deal with this. And I know this isn't just one parent doing this. I know a few that have done this because they don't want to be harassed about the attendance, and as you know, the flu, virus, whatever, is just bouncing around everywhere. I'm sure you have that with your teachers as well, uh, keeping them in. I want to talk about the, the girls, uh, being protected in sports. You know, I would maybe suggest you reach out to someone like the Independence Law Center and have them assist you in the writing of this policy. You know, the fact that, oh, this is always how we've done it. It takes six months, no longer really is acceptable. There are other ways of doing things and resources that you guys can tap into to expedite this. Parents want this stuff passed. They want it moved through. This is a priority to them, and I don't know if you've seen what maybe Elon Musk and Dozier are doing, but they're cutting through a lot of red tape. So I don't know if any of you know him or could reach out to some of his people. Maybe they could come and help you guys cut through, uh, some of this, uh,
Shout out Elon Musk.
We vote you guys in to office to change policy, to fight for our kids, to do the right thing. These guys work for you. I don't understand this dynamic where you have to wait for them to do something for you. We vote you in. We don't vote them in, and I respect what they do, and I'm grateful for what they do. I wouldn't want their job. I say that all the time. But you guys got to get some stuff done here. Last year, to my knowledge, there was almost nothing done in policy, almost nothing. I don't quite understand why, but now all of a sudden we're getting stuff done, and I'm glad about that. I hope you guys move through as much policy change as you guys can get to. You guys ought, that ought to be like, you guys ought to all be like an animal on the policy committee, because that's what parents want. We want the best for our children. The only way that we know to do that from this side is to vote for you guys.
Yeah.
Well, that's not a hundred percent true, but most people, yeah, that's all they know. But that's okay. We're gonna educate more and more. Oh, here we go.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Good, welcome.
Good, thanks. Um, I am gonna speak on the same thing as Sandra. When I came in, what was it? Was it last month that we did this policy meeting?
This is just gonna be a rotating line now, so let's just let her speak.
I had to hear about, um, people saying that we're gonna let the experts, experts constantly. Let's, let's let the experts decide. We did let the experts decide with COVID, with the masks, the COVID vaccines, and the social distancing. We don't want to do that anymore. The experts are the parents. We do not want to have boys in girls' sports. We do not want our girls hurt. They work so hard. The parents spend a lot of money. They need to be protected, okay? That goes for the bathrooms, too. If we're gonna do bathrooms, we're gonna do sports. And we do realize that this is gonna be an uphill battle, because from last month to today, it appears to be a lot of gaslighting. It appeared that when we asked for a timeframe, that certain people were getting very upset. To the public, that's what it looks for. We have conditions in the school. There's been condoms found, there's drugs, there's all sorts of things. Now we're gonna add mixing children in the bathroom. I do not want to hear about the data that it's not dangerous. We don't have the data because we don't have this going on fully, okay?
Amen.
We need to get back to education. We need to get back to education. We need to stop for the and what you've guys have been dealing with is gaslighting because all we're doing is fighting this LGBTQ thing. There our kids are very accepting to the LGBTQ. We do not want to stop anybody from doing anything, but we want to protect the children. That's in sports and that's in the bathroom. Okay? And we want the parents to have a head, a seat at this table. The experts do not know anything. Okay?
They do not. Absolutely, Kristy.
Amen.
Yep.
There we go. Who's next? Casey? Oh, no, not Casey.
Sorry about that.
Is it gonna be someone from the other side?
I don't know.
It is. I know she's been on other meetings.
So I was hoping to do less of a crowd, but so I want to focus on the parental notice of absence, which the two previous speakers spoke about. Especially regarding the three days of consecutive absences that you're changing the language from May to show. So recently my son was sick. It was mild, but it was enough that I wanted to keep him home to avoid spreading it. So I took him to the doctor. Hundred and fifty dollars later, I have an excuse for school. So this language, if you're requiring an excuse to either up it to maybe like five days, because I feel like that's enough length that, you know, an illness would dissipate. Um, and not require a health provider and or just remove this altogether.
I mean, the week that my daughter was sick.
I agree with her.
She was in the doctors. She went Sunday, Wednesday, Friday.
Thank you very much. Oh, I actually I do want to point out.
Let's talk about this for for a second here, because that's what she's talking about right now, this issue of needing a doctor's notes after X number of days of being absent. That's what the issue is, right? After after so many days of being absent, you need to have a doctor's note, right?
Yes.
No, they're saying collectively, like if you have three days. Collectively throughout the year, I thought Salt said, like they're gonna lump them.
Is that what it is?
How they can do that, but I could be wrong. I'd have we'd have to re-listen, so I apologize.
No, it's all right. I thought.
I I gotta check out for a moment.
If I'm not mistaken, I know who this guy is. He's one of our he's one of our lawyer. He's one of the most loyal boiling point podcast fans you're ever gonna find.
Wrong. There's over thirty identified intersex conditions.
That's obviously completely.
Chromosomes, genitalia, gonads and hormones. So that's just. Accepted within the medical and scientific community. There's variation. Sex is not binary.
Yes, it is, you jackass. All right.
I can't stand it.
No, no, this is the guy. I'm sorry. Hold on, Wendy, because this is the guy who has who likes to watch our show and reference our topics, but then not actually give us recognition. And that's cool. You're a smart. You're a smart idiot. I congratulate you for that. And yes, I'm gonna call you some names right now because I'm here on my show and you're at a school board meeting. You can get all the paperwork. You can doc get all the documents you want to quote everything from the World Health Organization and the CDC, all that you want. They are wrong. Didn't you just hear the previous paragraph? The experts are wrong. They have it wrong. They're doing it to play idiots like you. Sex is binary, male and female, with the exception of very, very few genetic conditions that happen. And these are so infantile. That they don't even count. We're not talking about that. We're talking about idiots like you and people with mental illness who want to change their sex or be called something that they're not. Okay, that's all it is. You can stand there and ramble all you want because there's nobody watching your livestream, the the school board's live stream right now. So no one is hearing you because I'm talking over top of you. In fact, I might just continue to talk over top of you for the entire duration that you're talking right now in this meeting. And there's nothing that you can do about it.
Population. I don't understand why we're spending so much time on it. Um, when last week there was.
Brandy, I'm gonna let you. I'm gonna I'm gonna break big box it again.
Okay.
If you if you respond or whatever, anything you need, I'm not gonna listen to this guy. I'm not gonna listen to this guy.
That while sex differences do develop following puberty, many of the sex differences are reduced, if not erased over time by gender affirming hormone therapy. They also make a note that there is no legitimate cases of a cisgender man, and they specifically say man, we're not talking about children here in this research article. We're talking about children there, um, that no cis men who cannot succeed in sports among other cis men would choose to misidentify as a trans woman to gain an advantage in sports against cis women. I don't think you understand how complex the process is for medical intervention. But there's more in that there. But essentially what this article says is there are biological variations. I look in front of me, I see people of different body builds, height, weight, hair. It's it's part of the human condition. So if we really want to promote fairness and safety in our sports. How about we not have two hundred fifty pound football players tackling a hundred fifty pound football players? That sounds safe. How about basketball players that are taller than six foot when the height average for males is five nine and females is five four? That's a biological advantage, I'd say. What about a swimmer like Michael Phelps with an abnormally wide wingspan? That's a physical advantage.
But that is naturally how he was born.
Policy is targeting a specific population, not a specific problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Keller.
Hello. Welcome. Um, I first wanted to speak to some of the discourse that occurred during the policy meeting when discussing proposed policy one twenty three point two. When hearing, are you saying other districts that have this language are breaking the law? I couldn't help but think of that old adage that my parents told me, as I'm sure we all have heard. If your friends were going to jump off a bridge, would you do it too? I think it's rather embarrassing for our district to see elected officials arguing about policy language and whether or not it violates the law. If there's even a suggestion about language being unlawful, why is it being considered for one of our policies? Another concern I have with the policy is that it was mentioned that our solicitor's law office came up with the policy. But the same uh in the same discussion, the policy committee also said that they provided the solicitor with Northern York School District's policy. So which is it? I ask because this policy has language that is identical in several places to Northern York's policy, which was written by the Independence Law Center. Now, I know that the board does not respond to questions asked during public comment, so this is just something that I'm putting out into the ether for people to think about. Who wrote the policy?
Which is not lawful.
For the time and effort that Tucker Aronsberg put into writing this? Did we get this for free from the Independence Law Center? Was this copied and pasted from Northern York's policy with a couple updates sprinkled in there? I also wanted to ask.
All right, sorry about that brief interruption that I had to step away.
Students, parents.
Point podcast second favorite.
Approach the board to ask for this policy.
Viewer is now at the table. That's great.
Push a discriminatory agenda. Because this policy and others like such as a restrictive bathroom policy threaten to bring more lawsuits onto the district. Policies like these also exclude non-binary and intersex students who are often forgotten in these conversations.
Not forgotten. They need mental health.
I looked up the absent the attendance stuff. Uh huh. And truant is defined as a child subject to compulsory school laws having three or more school days of unexcused during the year. Habitual truancy is six or more.
Thank you.
Unexcused during the year.
And they constitute unexcused as.
And they do not have.
What's unexcused?
Anything without a doctor's note is gonna be unexcused, right, Randy?
Yes.
To start also by speaking with the proposed new policy, so there are sex based distinctions with athletics. Uh, first with the definition, regardless if you have the word biological.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, Randy, let me mute you so we don't hear your kind of your private conversation on the air. No, this is these are mental illness. The people, this woman who's talking, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's mental illness and no, you you we need to protect it. Look at the data.
I know. It's super hard.
Yeah, here you go. Episode eighty eight of the boiling point podcast. Go check out episode eighty eight. Anybody who's watching this or is going to watch later, oh, we had another comment on this. Oh, Mariana. Oh, I didn't see it. Oh, Mariana's looking in. Uh, isn't she in there right now? I love that she's commenting. But for anybody watching, Randy, we'll. Episode eighty eight. We provide you with scientific data on why men should not be competing in women's sports. Okay, even we even have information referencing the female Olympic basketball team being defeated by a high school boys' basketball team. Okay? This the the data is irrefutable. It's irrefutable. And there's nothing that anybody with a with a sane consciousness can say to dispute the facts. There's just nothing you can do about it. These are the facts. This is biology. This is science. There's nothing you can do about it. There's enough empirical and scientific data to come to a conclusion. Men and women don't go together. They're separate sexes. There's a reason they're separate sexes. There's a reason you do things differently like bathrooms and sports and all of that. There's a reason. And episode eighty eight, we provide you with scientific data on why men should not be competing against women in sports. So go check that out. Episode eighty eight.
Timeframe as well. When you have therapy, hormone therapy, you also have to be at certain.
Anybody who has their children doing hormone therapy should be investigated right now for child abuse.
Correct.
Trying to say it's about fairness and protecting the girls and those opportunities. If you want true safety and fairness, protect the girls, protect the boys, protect the trans.
No, episode eighty eight.
Every child.
You can slam on the table all you want. You're still not right.
Have a policy that's actually just exposing biased intent.
It's not biased intent. It's about it's about it's wrong. And what are we talking about here? The only the only thing that that can happen. The only thing that can happen is you give these trans kids their own bathrooms. That is the only other thing that you can do. And even then, you're still going to have boys and girls in the same bathroom. And that's something is going to happen. And what happens when it happens in your school?
An agenda item and we have some electronic submissions for agenda items.
Do we have electronic first, please?
Yes, ma'am. Tracy Bidding expressed support for moving forward with renovations at the auditorium. Heidi Collington expressed support for moving forward with renovations.
You need to give me the email address.
Erin Edwards expressed support for moving.
Where you send these public cards?
Brian Rainey expressed support for moving forward with renovations at the auditorium.
My whole thing with the whole bathroom thing, you know, they already have issues with people, students having sex in the bathrooms. So it's just gonna condone now. Yeah, yes.
Sandra Gonzalez?
Oh, here we go. See, I yeah, let me get that email address then Denise sometime. I want to get. We got to get this out there. There's gonna be more.
It's in the private chat.
If you guys think you're getting ready to spend millions of dollars on a renovation of an auditorium, you guys have got to be out of your minds. We are in debt in this school district and you guys are gonna have to jack our taxes another three years in a row, from what I heard. The original plan was ten years in a row. And you're gonna spend money on a swimming pool when we have a proposal for a sports complex that is far more likely to be used by far more of our students than a swimming pool. Now, I know my granddaughter was here swimming last year, second grade came over. Wonderful.
Absolutely.
Think about the content of students that are gonna use a swimming pool. And I'm told our community uses it. That's nice. There are other swimming pools. You got to bus all our kids over to Redland to use that pool. Why not bus them over to the Y? Save us millions. What's it gonna cost you to renovate that swimming pool? Five, six, seven million dollars? And you guys are gonna dump that into a swimming pool when our Redland High School needs a sports complex? How are we gonna do both? Why aren't we looking for, I don't know, somebody in the community to sponsor that swimming pool? Why? Why would we just be pulling taxpayer money? I'm sure you have it tucked away in a little account somewhere that you're gonna yank it from. Paying down our debt or using it for our sports complex.
Can you just imagine the outrage is gonna happen if she gets elected?
Unbelievable.
Oh, I I.
Oh, yeah.
I hope I can get her on. I know how busy she is. She's a hit the bricks out there on the streets kind of person, but I really hope I can get her on an episode or two. While she's running because.
Apples to oranges.
I just want to give her a microphone.
You know, think about that.
Thirty minutes.
Because I guarantee you, when I'm out knocking doors and I say, you know, they're getting ready to blow about five million on a swimming pool renovation. And you know, you guys are always talking about needing, you know, extra square footage for classroom space. Man, that auditorium, if you fill that swimming pool, would make a great science lab, wouldn't it? A great chemistry lab. Boy, could we sure use that space for classroom space. Wouldn't have to put an addition on the building. It would be amazing. But instead, you know, people just are flabbergasted. At the amount of money you guys are getting ready to spend on a pool. I'm gonna continue knocking doors all day long and letting them know what you guys are up to. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Flamethrower Sandra Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen.
Of.
Yeah.
Public comment for agenda items.
Thank you. Number four, the minutes. You have the minutes.
I mean, it sucks that the auditorium needs to be fixed, but.
Is there a motion to approve?
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that does go on at it.
I thought Casey was gonna be speaking.
He's probably at the end.
Oh, what was that just? What what were they just speaking about? And what is the difference between just now and later?
In favor unless otherwise noted.
Sad Denise, you're muted.
He wanted to, he was gonna speak about the policy, but they couldn't make it in time.
The treasurer's report for the month of January twenty twenty five is attached.
Because the policy that they were discussing isn't on the agenda for the regular board meeting, I said.
Is there any discussion?
Put yourself down to speak as a general item.
Gotcha. Okay, so.
So you can still, he's gonna speak about the policy when it gets to general comment again. So now they're doing the business items.
So what we just watched were were speak public speaking on agenda items. And then at the end was just public comments for in a general sense.
General, right, but you know.
And committee meeting reports. Are there any board reports this evening? I have a board report. Facilities, Mrs. Davis.
And listen, to anybody watching this, I know how boring, um, you know, these meetings can be, you know, it's it's seeing how the sausage gets made. It's it's never pretty. And it's not glamorous. So anybody who's watching through all of these and and hearing everything and getting all the facts and stuff is. I commend you and I appreciate it. Please hit that like button. Hit that reaction button. Leave us a comment. Share out. All of those things help us reach more people, help us help us continue to grow our brands and reach more people, which ultimately, you know, will help those that we're helping.
Regarding the auditorium and we will be saving as of now around thirty five thousand dollars on design and programming. Um, Redland campus improvements update. Um, the weather is.
Who's talking?
Manny.
She's the vice president?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So again, Madam Vice President, please speak into the microphone.
Thank you. Any other board reports?
Wait, even start the business item yet.
So in the agenda, when you click on like the auditorium renovations. And it says it is a recommendation of the administration that the board of school directors accepts a proposal for design services for auditorium renovations from R L P S architects as attached. There's no attachment.
And universal bathrooms. Uh, we did have a policy meeting today, which I don't have. And universal bathrooms. Uh, we did have a policy meeting today, which I don't have.
Now, what is this up on the screen? That's items for discussion. Is this for what upcoming policies? Was that for upcoming policy meetings or what was that?
Your microphone.
Denise, you're
I was looking at the agenda, so I missed what was on the screen. Okay. The minutes from last meeting.
Yeah, this is for the minutes. The other one I think might have been for one of the committee meetings, like agenda items for the committee meetings, I believe.
Okay, so I'll give you two updates. I give you this meeting and and this week, this past week's meeting. So uh, we haven't gotten the notes for this past week's meeting in yet, but these are the notes from the other meeting. So basically, uh, in January, we met. And uh, that was our that was our marathon meeting, right? That was a like a four hour meeting, uh, where we reviewed the transportation RFP in detail. Um, and basically, uh, we are, we went and solicited bids uh, for transportation companies to handle the busing services. Um, we have a timeline that we're working towards, uh, and we're on track with that timeline. Uh, it was a very productive meeting, uh, and basically we tailored that uh, transportation RFP to uh, meet the district's specific needs. Um, and then we also had some updates on staffing. Uh, I think at that time, we had a couple, uh, was it one? One uh, bus aid on the buses in January? Yeah. Anyway, um, some updates on staffing, driver shortages. Uh, we now have, we we then had a bus aid on a bus. And uh, things were moving along. Tuesday's meeting was a short meeting in that we had, we got an update on transportation. We still have, I think, uh, what was it, sixteen out of town drivers uh, filling in on bus routes. Um, but the good news is, uh, we have four, four bus aids on specific targeted routes. Um, and the uh, bus aids are having a positive impact on behavior. Uh, it seems to be uh, a good thing. Um, and um,
Thank you for tuning in. This is Boiling Point Podcast, live streaming, the West Shore School District School Board Meeting. We're talking about minutes and bus routes currently at the moment. Uh, Denise and Brandy, my nephew is likely to come home any minute over the next thirty, forty-five minutes. So if he does, I'll likely uh, just have to mute for a few moments.
No big deal. My uh, granddaughter will kind of probably pop through. She's pretty good about giving me space, but sometimes it happens.
That's what happens when you have That's what happens.
I'm never home by myself, so. Yeah, never. Minus the dog sleeping in his crate. Can't believe he's actually in there.
Of evaluating those bids. We have a very detailed rubric that we've developed for evaluating.
I apologize. I seem to have, I don't know if I have the allergy going on, but like a dry cough and my eyes are very irritated. Forgive me. It's that time of year, unfortunately. Yeah, I'm gonna have to find my eye drops.
Don't worry about it. I have I have I have this big box. Nobody can see you at the moment anyway.
Oh, okay, cool. I'll be right back.
Thank you. Any other board reports? Okay. Uh, number seven, business items. A reminder to please remain quiet as the board deliberates and takes care of meeting business. Personnel.
That's no.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the following personnel agenda items, item seven A one through item seven A ten. Can I have a second? Second.
I'm trying to scroll. I'm trying to catch at least scan it as they're scrolling through all of this as they approve items one through eight, I think is what they're going for.
Does the vote take place?
It looks like a bunch of, it looks like a bunch of, um, personnel, like people retiring, uh, maybe people changing uh, from one titled position to another. That's what most of that appeared to be. But again, I was you can check it out on the website.
Unless otherwise noted, the motion passes eight to zero.
Where's number nine? Who's missing?
With professional and support this evening. Are there any new hires present who we would um, and be recognized by the board?
David.
At least one.
Can anyone take a wild guess on who this new hire is?
They have a new hire? I don't know what any of this is.
Welcome. Definitely welcome to West Shore School District. We're excited to have you.
Madam President, I move we approve the following items together, seven B, seven C, and seven D.
Do I have a second?
That's bills for approval, real estate tax fund and budgetary transfers.
Brandy, you were fantastic. We need to make you coming on here with me doing these a regular thing.
I'll try.
And if you ever looking for when I can pay you, I'm definitely going to hit you up. I I would love somebody on the other side, a producer on the other side who can do the looking up and the things when I'm actually uh, like doing a broadcast.
All members will be recorded as voting in favor unless otherwise noted. This motion passes eight to zero. Number seven, Mr. Gay. Staff attendance at professional meetings. E, yep.
Recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approves the request for staff attendance at professional meetings. You have the information in front of you.
So moved. Do we have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding staff attendance at professional meetings? This will be conducted as a roll.
What is this?
I would like to know what the professional meetings are.
Yeah, what is, that's what I'm asking. What the hell is that?
I don't know. There's nothing with it.
Well, they just approved it eight to zero, whatever it is.
It just says staff members have requested to leave, requested leave to attend the professional activities at this time and locations listed on the attached document. But there's no attached document.
David, the district's construction manager. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors approves the following change orders, Old Trail General Contract Change Order number thirteen, Old Trail Electrical Contract Change Order number thirteen, and Old Trail Site Change Order.
Why are we still doing change orders for the school this far into it?
So moved. Second. Is there any discussion?
All right, so we're gonna try and see if I can't add.
Sanders, am I reading this correctly? Old Trail Site Change Order number fifteen, we're getting back a hundred and twenty thousand?
That is correct. That was the unused unsuitable soil allowances coming back to us.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be conducted as a roll call vote. All members will be recorded as voting in favor unless otherwise noted. The motion passes eight to zero. Number seven, G, Redland Site Improvement Change Order, Mr. Sanders.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we have a conflict that came up between the grading plan and field conditions on the bus loop. Uh, it is the recommendation of the Board of School Directors uh, that the Board of School Directors approve Redland Site Improvement Change Order number fifteen.
Well, that's just where that hundred and twenty thousand dollars went. Cause it's a total of seventeen thousand nine hundred and one.
Discussion.
I just have a question on that.
This is tyranny.
Is this being funded out of the first million dollar grant?
This is, uh, this project is the one that is funded with the ARP funds. Correct.
Okay. Um, at some point, I would just love an accounting of overall where that project is, just so I understand the additional costs to the million dollars. Not that I'm objecting to it. I'm grateful for the work.
Yeah.
But I would like to understand.
We'll get you the the full tally. The the original bid was one million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars on bid day. This change order is gonna modify that, but I'll get you the updated.
And I'm, I mean, I'm not disagreeing that they need their sports complex or whatever, but when this whole project started, it was that they were not putting a stadium in.
Okay, this will be conducted as a roll call vote. All members will be recorded as voting.
And I think that now has changed.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Madam President, I move we approve items seven G and seven H.
Seven H and seven I?
I scribbled over too much.
So H is a comedy oven installation and I is Cleveland Range Steamer.
Do I have a second?
purchase of them.
Is there any discussion, Dr. Aragot? Anything you'd like to clear up for us? Point out?
Thank you. I would just highlight that both of these funds are coming out of food service reserves rather than capital reserves or the general fund.
Great, thank you. This will be conducted as a roll call vote. All members will be recorded as voting in favor unless otherwise noted. The motion passes eight to zero. Next is seven J, Special Education Settlement Agreements, Mr. Gay.
It's the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors authorizes execution of the settlement agreements that you have attached and that you all have.
So moved. Second, anyone?
Second.
It just says
Is there any discussion?
Two students as an alternative to unresolved issues being litigated via a special education due process hearing.
Roll call vote. All members will be recorded as voting in favor unless otherwise noted. The motion passes eight to zero. Seven K, auditorium renovations, Mr. Sanders.
Here we go.
Madam President, uh, the district has been exploring options for renovations to the auditorium located at Redland High School. The facility was originally opened in nineteen eighty-seven and is in need of renovations and repairs to sustain operations. The auditorium was reviewed with our current architects and engineers and proposals were obtained, including different options for pool consultants. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of School Directors accepts the proposal for design services for auditorium renovations from RLPS Architects as attached.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion regarding the auditorium renovations?
There, I would hope.
Um, this is Thomas.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I can't see you over there.
The construction cost that's seven point five to eight point five million, where will this money be coming from?
That's a great question.
Mrs. Boone.
Um, we currently have approximately five million in bond borrowings that we took out to finish the intermediate schools. Um, so there was discussion about possibly using the remainder of those bond monies towards this project. And then anything above and beyond that five million would come out of capital reserve at this point.
So no tax increase.
What?
Well, I a point of clarification would be
Mr. Sanders.
This recommendation is for design services. It's not for the for everyone's sake. This is not the bid. We didn't scope the project. I just want to be clear because we've mentioned several times the seven, these figures. We we haven't scoped the project or bid it yet. This is just for design. That's the only thing the board is authorizing this evening.
Understood, but the overall cost as an estimate, that is uh, money that we already have?
Yes. Sure.
No, no, seriously.
No, that's not.
I mean, we, like I said, we borrowed the ten million to finish the intermediates with the plan of only using half of that towards the intermediates. So we have that five million setting aside when we approved that resolution to do that bond borrowing. It was stated in that resolution that it could be used on our secondary and um, you know, any building projects. And then above and beyond that, um, we have funds in our capital reserve. Um, if we wanted to tap into that to fund the rest of the project.
When you say
Thank you.
Building funds, what do you mean by that? When when you were saying like to finish a building, what does?
When we did the final bond borrowing, the twenty twenty-four bond borrowing, we took out just shy ten million.
So they borrowed ten million dollars. That's what we're hearing, right, Brandy?
We were only needing approximately five million of that to finish the intermediate.
Only needing five.
So we knew that there was going to
Using the other, knowing they were gonna use the other five for something.
Sitting aside in that bond, a bank account that we could earmark and put towards another project.
So that could be used towards the Redland project or no?
It could be used towards any capital.
There you go.
Yes.
For Allen Middle School's renovations, or you pick one?
Correct. I mean, Mr. Hall, you can correct me, but the resolution was worded in a way that it could be used on any project at any of our buildings.
My my uh, recollection is that we uh, broaden the language in that specifically for that purpose. I'd have to go back and confirm that.
Yeah.
So right now, we're just confirming the design, our RLTS to do the design set, their approximate conception estimate is five point or seven point five to eight point five. So we're just voting for the resolution for them to look at this, correct, Mr. Sanders?
Uh, this is an engagement with RLPS just to do design. Correct. There's no obligation to to do the project, to do the construction. The only thing we're obligating ourselves to at this time is to do a design for a for a project.
So we wouldn't necessarily have to do one through fifteen? On like repair the pool, all of that, that's
That's that's the estimated scope of work that's going to be included in the design.
Mr. Sanders, can you clarify something? The the design is a detailed design that is actionable versus a rough estimate, correct?
Uh, it's gonna give us a better estimate. It's going to get scoping to a point that you're ready to move into specifications and production of documents. We have a pause point built in the way that this agreement is structured. We're gonna get the high level concept design. So think of it kind of similar to how far we've gotten with Allen Middle School to now. We have a general idea of what we want it to look like. We have a general idea and we have a cost, very high level cost estimate. It's going to be a very similar process with an auditorium. We've just intentionally structured this to say, we're gonna get the design, we're gonna do the scoping, and we're gonna stop. And then we're going to have a decision point to say, do we want to continue with the design to get into construction documents that you could actually go out to bid? But we would be pausing and working with the facility committee at that point in time minimally to say, yep, we're gonna move forward on the next part. There's an intentional breakpoint there. Um, we've also talked at time with both facilities and with finance committee about potential grant opportunities that could help fund the project. Um, but again, in order to be able to pursue those grant opportunities.
Why would you even?
We have to have a scope of work. We have to have a general design. We have to have a good project estimate. That's what this agreement is designed.
Yeah, but it's gonna be to rebuild it. What if you got a one where if you caved in like Sandra was suggesting, turn on more school buildings and stuff, then you could move forward with that.
I don't know. If you were in the facilities committee meeting last week, there was some information provided to us by Councilman Hunt Ecker on previous projects that they have done. And I I did, I did some looking at those projects and and I asked a clarifying question on what's the size and scope of our project? And how does that compare to what we got last week in facilities committee? And I did some, I did some numbers uh, to to run a comparison. Um, and this is an opportunity for us as they go through the design process. Uh, and I I I challenged Mr. Sanders with this, and and I I think this is a good practice to value engineer the design, right? Uh, to to understand what's going in, what's not going in, and and really look at, and you you've heard me say this in the past multiple times, to sharpen the pencil, right? And I think this is an opportunity, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sanders, for us to look at this design holistically and maybe sharpen the pencil.
Again, well, that's part of what will happen in the scoping as we go through the design, get to the point where we're ready to do design documents. This is typical when we would look at what all's in the project. I mean, we'll use examples of um, there are offices there that are currently, they they're air conditioned in a way, and the board members have toured that facility where yeah, there's a window unit, but it blows the hot air right into the room next door. So while you're cooling one room, you're heating the other room that's right next to it. Um, those are the kinds of things. Do you want to move that to a centralized system? If we say yes to that, there's a scope that comes with it. If we say no, the office stays conditioned and we keep boiling the room next door. Um, those are the kinds of things. I I'm not sure how much value there is. Those are the kinds of things. I, I'm not sure how much value there is in leaving that sort of condition in place. But those are, those are decisions and conversations that we're going to have in the design process.
Yeah, we, we can choose the bells and whistles we want in our pool. We can get a basic design or we can get a design with bells and whistles. It's up to us at that point on how far we want to go with it.
And I would like
Mrs. Davis, yes.
Read or just explain that Kelly and I had the opportunity to meet with RLPS three weeks ago with Dr. Stoltz and Mr. Sanders. And it was a really informative meeting. They explained a lot about Allen Middle School and just that scope and what that looks like in the past projects that we've done with them as well as what the nadatorium looks like. There was a lot of things that I've toured the nadatorium once or twice, I think maybe twice now. And I, I understand and see the problems that we're having, but there was other things that I had no idea that now you're gonna have to help me with this. When you had to order the weights because it's not sealed properly or like that, it really affects the chlorine and all the chemicals affects things.
Why wasn't it sealed properly? Why wasn't the upkeep kept with it?
And that needs to be remedied. So that's like a cost factor and other things. And it's also, it's a chemical thing. So, but in the past, when they've wanted to go with higher bells and whistles, we as a board have said, no, that's too much. We want to take, we want to scale that back because we want to save money here. We don't see that as important. It's just a, like a cool design and it costs, like, we don't want to do that. That's too many for else. And they are very they honor that. So I, I felt very comfortable after meeting with them.
Denise had to jump out of the live stream. She's not feeling good.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, I'll just be me and Brandy finishing up here.
And she's been explaining a ton to me and helping me understand a lot more of that as well, where we're going. So that's my piece.
I just want to say thank you for taking the time
Yes.
to have that meeting with RLPS. I appreciate that very much. We could do that, yes.
And I'd like to piggyback from Mrs. Tierney, just to props to the facilities. This has been a very deliberate year and a half process where you have toured others, I mean, you've traveled to other schools, you have talked to numerous people and I just, I have all the confidence in the world that, you know,
Excuse me.
advice and the decisions that you're making. Just thank you for your diligence with that. If I piggyback now to the finance committee meeting with Mr. Brinton of not being here, I don't want to speak out of turn, but you know, again, a consideration is with the capital reserve fund and we do have some big things coming up and whether it's only, you know, only two mil, between the Allen Middle School and we have some decisions we had at this past finance committee, different borrowing options for roughly sixty million dollars and whatnot and what that does to our debt service and we have the luxury, I guess, of having a healthy capital reserve. But when then it's a couple million for the nadatorium or ten millions, I don't want to say ten million, I apologize, seven million, whatever we decide to bring out as a perhaps down payment for Allen. And then the Redland, it just, it's one of those things I also worry that we could draw down very quickly on that capital reserve. And as Dr. Stoltz often says, there's no shortage of other things, correct, with roofing or whatever. So I understand right now that we're not committing to the, any dollar amount, but just to again, put on our radar of some big things upcoming and what is our comfort level of drawing that down to a point where
Seems like there's several school board members who are
Would happen.
All four of we're taking on this pool project on top of building a stadium field.
I mean, the West Shore Rec uses it a lot. You know, they offer the swimming lessons. Our district uses it a lot. I mean, it's nice to have, but if there is if the cost is going to be so astronomical that it's not going to be feasible.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are raising taxes. You guys are in the middle of a ten year tax hike.
Yeah, I know, it's ridiculous.
And you're still fifty million dollars in the hole. Seems kind of bizarre to take on another project. And that, that half, that, that five million dollars that they're using, like that's gonna be the most of the costs or whatever. You're telling me that five million dollars couldn't be used on the stadium project or somewhere else?
Yeah. I'm honestly still confused about the whole stadium project.
In a pligot account and we are
Because, like I said before, when it was originally talked about, it was that they're not getting a stadium because we have the West Shore Stadium where both teams play at. And so one of the things I had said was, okay, well, our band doesn't travel because every Friday night, somebody is home. So if, let's just say Redland and Cedar Cliff are both home at their respective places. What happens with our band?
Yeah, the West Shore School District is interesting that they, that they kind of have two school districts kind of within the school district.
Right.
Very weird. Who's the guy sitting over there?
Guy Swite.
Couple of comments.
That's who Sanders running against.
He's the guy in the, I don't know, gray shirt.
Yeah, next to Vice President Mandy.
Yeah. One project versus another project as if they are in competition with one another, right? Our intent, you know, this year I think we did a good job of identifying four big things, right? And those four big things are on four different timelines, right? So those four being Redland Campus, Nadatorium, Full Day K, and Allen Middle School. They're all four on different timelines. One of the things that we really haven't talked about, but that bond money, that's on a timeline. That, that has to be spent within three years of when it was taken out. The, the the project that lends itself to that in that timeframe is the nadatorium. The two million dollar RACP grant requires two million dollars worth of matching funds. That has not yet been determined, but if we said that was two million dollars coming out of our reserves, we do not we don't yet have a four million dollar design, right? That's another piece that we're working on to get those experts engaged in that the same way we are in the nadatorium. So I just want to caution everybody about that. This isn't necessarily, our intent is to do both of those things, right? So, or at least where we've been talking. The other thing I wanted to just make a mention of is if you're not looking at the facility committee meeting agendas or the finance committee meeting agendas, it is one thing to get the minutes afterwards, but Mr. Sanders had a, a, a very nice report on capital project funding in the facility committee meeting from February. And it actually talks about how we have managed expenses in some big ways over the, over the course of the last several years, ten years, et cetera, and how we have managed capital projects. So the idea that we're
But have they done such a good job? Why are we so far in debt?
Effectively or well over time, I think there's some information out there that, that, that everyone, not just board members, but members of the public would find as helpful and useful information. And then of course, the last part is how do we close a budgetary gap? Do all of those things and close a budgetary gap in the process. So those are all things on the radar and I'll end my comments there. And I'll just say, I view this as a very positive item. So I realize the board has not yet voted on this, but this is a, one of the four big things that we said we wanted to work on. And this is a step in the direction of actually moving some, moving one of those four forward. So.
And I'll just remind everybody that we've been working on this particular item for what, five years now? We've been talking about it for a really long time. So we need to, we need to do something.
Just a quick comment if I can. Thank you, Mrs. Brent. We, Dr. Stoltz talked about your, our four things, his four things that the board came up with, we came up with. And we all agreed on that these are four important things we want to do. So thank you for helping to get that through. Mrs. Davis, Mr. Gus White, and Ms. Tierney, thank you very much for working with me on the facilities committee. I know we are all looking at the finances of this and we will sharpen pencils. We're not just writing a blank check and I know we're doing our due diligence. We have visited other, other schools and see what they have. We have directed Mr. Sanders, he's done a lot of footwork for us, finding other people to give their opinions about this pool. And this is, again, this is just what is the scope, what is design, this is laying out. And from there, I know Mr. Gus White would be sitting there with his fine, fine tooth comb and magnifying glass and we all will be. And making sure that we are getting what we need. Hopefully be done for its fortieth anniversary. I mean, that's an old pool and it's used a lot. It's used a lot by our kids who learn how to swim there. It's used a lot by our aquatics clubs. It's used by our swimming teams. It's, pool is used great deal. And I think one of the biggest challenges Mr. Sanders is going to have is trying to schedule when this work is going to be done around all those activities. And I do not I do not envy him that, that job. So again, I want to say thank you to everybody and everybody on the board who has made this a one of our priorities for this year. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Brent, the only last thing I'd like to say is as Mr. Gus White referenced, I think I toured this facility for the first time five years ago and
How long has she been on the board?
And according to our plan.
Who are you, who are you talking about?
Abigail Tierney.
I do not know, but
I'm looking, hang on.
For a long time, if I'm not mistaken.
It, it took her just within the last five years?
Rather than able to do it in the time in which Controlled manner, right?
Let me see.
You know, I have to say I know it sounds expensive and it is, but I've been talking to Brayden about this. I'm a scuba diver and, and I do a lot of ocean cleaning and I do a lot of odds and ends, but I'm also
She's a trained mediator.
You'd be surprised the kinds of things that happen out there in the water that you wouldn't expect. And I have saved somebody's life oddly, but I took my first scuba diving class in this nadatorium. And
It doesn't say how long she's been.
Pretty much water. I just think it's unconscionable to let our kids get out of
It just says she
knowing how to swim if we were surrounded by the Yellow Breaches Creek, the Susquehanna River.
That's kind of scary.
Giverpincho Park. These are all the places that we go to recreate, but in a flash flood or you know, we've lost kids in this school district due to
Dickinson School of Law.
Well, the president is certainly on board with the pool.
Right, editor in chief of the Dickinson Law Review. She served as assistant counsel assigned to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for nearly sixteen years. She's a trained mediator.
A tax increase for this project. And that's just my final word on that. To me, this is way more, way more about keeping our children giving them a really big tool for the way the world works.
Yeah, I'm not sure how long she's been a
And on that note, any further discussion?
There's still what, public comments?
This will be conducted as a roll call vote. All members
Is this the last vote on the agenda?
Yes.
All right, so then we don't have too much longer here. It's about to be over.
Madam President, can I go up and ask? I seem to have missed a question that I had regarding seven B bills for approval. I just want some clarification. Okay, hold on one second. Seven B bills for approval. Mrs. Boone, go ahead. Um, I don't, I, I saw a rather large sum for Laurel Life.
Counseling services.
What services does Laurel Life provide? How many kids do we have? Cause it, over the, I saw we pay monthly November and December, and then there are two other large draws for a contract that add up to like a half a million dollars.
Laurel Life is, they provide mental health services to students in a couple of different formats. One is school-based mental health. So children who have mental health needs. Their families can secure services for mental health treatment through Laurel Life and the district supports that to an extent when it's not covered through insurance. That's one. Two, we have Laurel Life services embedded in our emotional support programs throughout the district. So they provide the counseling services. They're in our schools every day. Providing counseling services to specific population as part of, you know, functioning like a member of the team or staff. So we have a number of Laurel Life staff embedded in our district who provide mental health and counseling support.
In addition to our other emotional support staff.
Yes, they're not the teachers, they're counselors. That's correct. We have counselors and we have teachers.
Okay. Cause the bill's like, it's a half a million dollars.
We paid
Entire contract for the year.
We paid three hundred and fifty dollars.
And then we pay them monthly also.
To Dallas Town.
Pay them, actually, it was
High school for junior high team entry fee.
And then the contract, yeah, like Dr. Stoltz said, you're seeing, we got both invoices for whatever reason at like basically the same time. So that's, you're seeing the same amount, but it's one full contract being paid for the entire year. Yes. So it's over half a million after, because then you pay by the month also. Well, the contract
These are two separate services.
Yeah, two different things.
Good lord.
Cause what you're paying for, for the month is for individual sessions with individual kids.
But it gets paid to Laurel Life.
Correct. But that's the service that's being provided. The other two large ones that you're seeing there is the cost for the Quest classrooms. The supports that are being provided in those emotional support classrooms.
Quest is the name for our emotional support program. Students with IEPs for emotional disturbance in there at a certain level.
It just seemed awful high to me.
How many students benefit from that?
Off the top of my head, but we have provided those numbers to the board in board notes on a couple of occasions. Ms. Murphy and Dr. Butt provided that information earlier this year. I can re, I can find that and share that again.
Are any of those services reimbursed through school-based access?
Say that again?
The monthly fees that you see for the individual counseling, we're funding about seventy thousand dollars of that per year through Title IV. Where at the time of the year, we will start to transition out of the Title IV.
Need to go back and look through all these. Some of these payments are wild.
But we've been, that's a federal grant that we use.
We should, we should get together and do an episode on their budget sometime or, or at least on their public budget and what they show out there, everybody.
Information items. Dr. Stoltz, do we have any information items?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, number nine, recognition of the public.
We have none that I see as students, but we do have some in person and we have some electronic.
Okay, could you read the electronic first? And again, this is general items. Thank you.
Brandy Brandl and Oliver Brandl will express support for moving forward with a policy on sex-based differences in athletics. Ash Usain expressed concern about moving forward with, with policies on bathrooms or sex-based differences in athletics. Sandra McCarver encouraged board members to consider federal laws and Pennsylvania Human Relations Act when considering policy revisions. All of these were shared with the committee at the board in advance. And I should say Ash's original statement was for the February thirteenth board meeting, but we didn't have everything in place until afterwards.
Understood, thank you. Public comment provides an opportunity for community members to share their insights and feedback with the board. Each speaker is allocated four minutes to present their remarks and the board will listen to all comments. Any questions raised will be addressed following adjournment. At which time
Which is ridiculous.
or board members may respond, provided further research is not required. We kindly request that all attendees demonstrate respect for speakers and refrain from disrupting the proceedings. Comments should be directed to the board collectively rather than to any individual member. And we ask that speakers avoid addressing other members of the audience directly as well. Joey Askey? Joey Askey?
Oh God, here we go again.
Hello.
Welcome.
I'm just going to open by saying what I wouldn't give to just sit and listen to debate about how much fixing the pool's going to cost. That's, that's the stuff a board meeting should be about. And it's great to hear the collaboration between all of you on issues surrounding the pool and whatever else is going in at Redland. You'll have to excuse me, I was never much of an athlete, as you've maybe been able to tell if you've had.
So, she's a hater against the athletes.
Yes.
But I also just want to say I'm really grateful that you're paying attention to the pool as well. That is not just an asset for the district, that is a community asset. Through the Westshore Rec, my child did learn to swim in that pool. So, I also feel very strongly about making sure that we have access to those skills because not everyone does. And when you don't, it can end in a tragedy. And all that being said about what we're spending our time and money on in this district, I have a quote from an actress recently, and I don't usually bring those up here, from actress Laverne Cox. I don't believe.
Oh, God.
Relation to Mrs. Cox or her family. She said, you know,
She's transgender.
$15 million were spent on anti-trans ads in the last election. And if you watched, you would think that it was only about trans people and immigrants. Executive orders limiting our rights, 26 states have banned gender-affirming care for young people, banning us from the military, the bathrooms. Laverne Cox is an out trans woman. There's this whole anti-trans thing and we're less than 1% of the population.
So, why do we cater to you then?
So, why are we spending time excluding and bullying such a small number of?
It's not excluding, it's not excluding and bullying. And it's my nephew's home, so I'm going to have to keep my mic muted for that.
If you're spending that much time, like that much time on this, on this specific issue.
My whole issue with the whole bathroom thing is when did girls' rights stop? Because they haven't. And it's not just that, kids are cruel. And if, and if you go into the bathroom and somebody's in it that you don't want in there, how do we know that somebody's not going to attack them?
Thank you, Mrs.
You know, it's not truly just about.
My comments are addressed to a comment that you received at your meeting last week, but they.
Our students, it's about all of them.
We have a couple of comments coming in. Dave, Dave, shout out Dave Ruslett from America's Tribune tuning in. We were talking about that a little earlier. So, one of the parents actually commented, Dave, and asked, literally asked Elon Musk on the public record to come and help Westshore School District.
That's funny.
Florida's superiority is related to its elimination of SEL learning, social and educational learning programs in their public school curriculum. Those contentions are erroneous, they're not supported by the facts, and paying any attention to them will be harmful to your.
They're emphasizing Brandy's points.
I mean, not only with that, I think too.
Was not based on K-12.
You know, we already have the issue within the bathrooms.
The very same US News rankings for pre-K to 12 schools, which were not cited to you.
You know, why add to it?
From 1 to 5. Massachusetts, New Jersey, Connecticut, New Hampshire, and New York. These states all have very robust SEL curricula, which certainly demonstrates that that education is fully consistent with high achievement in K-12 public education. It's almost laughable to me, at least, that Florida's high ranking, when it included higher, when US News included higher education, that its ranking, including higher education, which was cheered, comes from the fact that what US News did was base a state's higher education score.
Well, even, even with the whole bathroom thing, I need to get with Denise and get get the name of the court case because it was voided in Kentucky. So, there's no.
College-educated retired professionals from the Northeast.
It can't go anywhere at this point.
To retire and live. Go figure. The fact is that when student achievement in Florida and Pennsylvania K-12 schools is isolated, the states are generally comparable in achievement. Both states tend to be near the national average. Looking at the NEAP scores, which is the nation's report card published by the Department of Education, which is the gold standard for comparison of testing scores among public schools. In 2024, there were four categories of student tests which both Pennsylvania and Florida reported. Pennsylvania was superior in two, Florida was superior in two. If you compare the NAAP scores going back in years, the same pattern tends to show with the two states essentially tying each other in testing rank. There seem to be very few third-party state rankings, that is, non-government rankings, of K-12 education, which take into account metrics in addition to standardized test scores. But in searching for those kind of evaluations of public schools, I did find one which seemed comprehensive. It was done by the Nerd Wallet folks at World Population Review. In that ranking, which included categories of student success, school quality, school safety, test achievement, the same northeastern states again topped the list with Pennsylvania ranking ninth and Florida ranking 42nd. My takeaway from all this analysis is this, and my request of you, the board is.
Sir, your time is up.
Keep your eye on the ball.
Thank you. Julie Estep?
She's another one that's going to disagree.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I had the honor, and this is my thing, you'll have figured it out.
Always the loudest in the room, but they're always the fewest in number.
I want people to hear you. Okay, I had the honor of being at the Crossroads Middle School Band Performance last night. And I've said it a couple of times, the music program at the Westshore School District is superior. What those directors were able to do with those boys and girls was nothing short of amazing, considering the.
Oh, look, she just recognized only two genders.
Music that they were asked to perform and the length of time that many of these students.
That's hilarious, excellent points, excellent point out.
Instrument in their hands. So, as I've said before, and I have not had the honor of being at the high school for any of their presentations, but I'm sure that they are, they'll just, I'm sure, blow me away. If you have not had the opportunity to hear one of the middle school bands orchestra, I recommend that you do so. It's, it's an incredible experience, it's amazing. And as I've said before, whatever those people want, get it for them because they are building a program that is beyond comparison to anything else.
And that's so funny she says that because when they built the intermediate schools, at least my daughter's intermediate school does not have enough space to hold the instruments that those students have. My daughter's violin sits out in the hallway on a cart.
You're taking and to make a move in a school district and not do an RFP or a rubric or know what you're evaluating. It just should not be done. I did want to also comment a couple of times, and I think, Mr. Gay, you mentioned, a couple of times I did hear, when are we going to get a new curriculum? And I just wanted to go on.
When do we hear that?
Mr. Gay, you also did. The Westshore School District has resources. It's a state curriculum. And I would also encourage people at the time when those materials are ready to be reviewed, that you spend some time and do it. Because I had the opportunity with the HMH and it's an awesome program. So, I recommend.
It's full of social, emotional learning.
Do that, take the time. We have a lot of conversations about money and that sort of thing. There was an audit done, it was on the news. And I think we should all be aware of what is happening with the funds that are generated, or taxpayer funds, rather, that are going to charter cyber schools. If you want to look for money that could conceivably do some of these programs, the inequities in the funding is a good place to start looking.
Well, if they're not careful, they're about to lose all their funding. Federal funding, that is.
Especially now with the Republicans in control and Trump in office.
Yep.
That I want to comment on.
Well, the Department of Education has 14 days to get DEI out.
To prepare our students for the world.
Good to know.
The world may not be what you want it to be. It may not be the way you think it should be. But the fact remains that we have an obligation to prepare our boys and girls for that world. And I think we need to always keep that in the back of our minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Gonzalez?
Oh, Sandra's back.
Here we go. Please tell, let them go, Sandra, Christie, and.
Right? Well, Christie would have gone.
Uh-oh, we lost their feed. Hold on, we lost their feed. Their, their feed is not working. I am not having, I am live streaming right now. I'm not having any kind of connectivity issues or connection issues.
Their board meetings do that a lot?
I've, this is the first one I've seen. And how are there 34 people? We've got to get the word out there, Brandy, to tune into the Boiling Point Podcast. How are there 34 people watching their livestream right now? They should be tuning in here. So, we got to get the word out there more that they got to be tuning in here. We got to get people tuning in here to watch the school board meetings. Because there are 34 people watching right now and now they're watching a blank screen, so. We definitely got to get more of these guys to tune in over here on the Boiling Point Podcast. I'm not sure what's going on with their feed here. We're going to, we'll give it a little time. We'll give it a few minutes here.
She's back talking about the pool again.
Can you see it? You're still watching?
Uh, no, but just froze again.
Oh, okay. So, Sandra is speaking right now, we're not going to get to see it. You know, I'm, it seems pretty coincidental to me. You say it happens, I've never, I haven't seen it happen. This is the first time I've seen it happen since I've been covering these. So, which doesn't, you know, I haven't been covering that many, so.
She just asked how many are on the aquatic swim team.
See if I can do anything to fix this.
I had to refresh mine.
Okay, yeah, here we go.
But I'm telling you, you guys are talking about spending potentially $5 to $8 million.
All right, we got it back on the screen.
How many new schools do we need to build yet to keep up with all the houses going up? How many of our roofs? How many of our schools? Is Newberry the only one that doesn't have air conditioning? I don't know.
I agree with Sandra though. Yeah, I think that $5 million could be spent elsewhere than for a new.
Pulled some of these teachers, they could start spitting out all kinds of projects that they think are critical that need to be done. And we're doing a poll. I, I cannot fathom in this economy why we're doing that.
I mean.
And I'm going to be on this.
It does bring revenue in.
And, and.
I don't know how much.
To something that was said earlier as well. Look at our test scores, man.
Yep.
Look at our test.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I agree that there's nothing wrong with redoing your poll and doing that, but.
Singing the praises.
It's.
The Department of Education.
The Westshore School District is really kind of in, is in kind of some rough shape right now, so. I don't know if a poll is really where the money should be spent.
Here comes Christie.
Yeah, Christie, Sandra, Christie, Casey, that's what the lineup's going to be. That's the heart of the lineup right there. Casey's going to back clean up.
Good evening.
Oh, that's not Christie.
No.
It's a different Christie.
I serve as the Public Education Champion with Education Voters of Pennsylvania.
Is that Mickle?
And equitable funding and policies for our school district and for public.
Oh, maybe.
She's running for school board.
You might be right, yeah. She's the one running, she's the one running against Sandra? Or they looking for somebody to run against her?
No, she's running, hold on, I'll bring it up.
In addition to the $70 million increase in basic education.
We're definitely going to try and keep Brandy coming back to these live watch-alongs. She has been very resourceful and helpful in this, in this particular one, I'll tell you. We've got some comments coming up too, so let's take a look. Oh, yeah, Christie commenting.
The Commonwealth Court says Pennsylvania students are entitled to for inadequate and equitable education.
Oh, Christie left.
While the numbers might be boring to some.
Kelly's region, Christie just said it's Kelly's region, so she's running against Kelly.
Yes.
So, this is who's running against your school board president right now.
$5,000 to aid our special education needs. It also gives $2.2 million to address longstanding funding inequities and to provide targeted financial relief, ensuring our district.
Hey, Christie, make sure you share this out and make sure you let everybody else know that they need to start tuning into our livestreams. I was just looking at the Westshore on the website and it says that they got like 34 viewers right now. How are 34 people watching that and not tuning into us? So, we got to get the word out more.
On the impact of starting this program. Beyond the budget proposal, House Bill 480 would cement these changes into Pennsylvania law, ensuring long-term sustainable savings for districts across the Commonwealth. I recently met with Representative Mark Anderson, who, as a veteran teacher, agrees the taxpayer dollars should not be used for cyber charter advertising. That money should be supporting student learning, not marketing. Just today, PA Auditor General, Auditor General Tim DeForre released a performance audit of cyber charter schools, reinforcing the need to amend the current funding formula. This issue has now gained bipartisan support, demonstrating that fair and responsive funding is not a partisan issue, but necessary for reform. I encourage both the board and the residents to reach out to our state representatives and voice support for these changes. By advocating for this budget and House Bill 480, we can ensure that we are spending public education dollars responsibly and that our district receives the financial relief it needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Reed?
Up there's Casey.
Yeah.
Welcome.
I would like to address a matter in which the correct conclusion is so obvious that it's a disgraceful indictment of our societal condition that even needs to be stated. I refer to the fact that males should not be allowed to invade female spaces, including, among many other scenarios, men and boys competing in men, women's, and girls' sports. Would we allow a 21-year-old college athlete to identify as 14 and compete against seventh and eighth graders in middle school sports? Would we allow a 285-pound wrestler to identify as weighing 100 pounds and compete in that weight class? Would we allow a perfectly healthy varsity track and field athlete to identify as disabled and compete in the Special Olympics? A solid answer is the obvious conclusion and is no less the case concerning males invading female competitions. Contrary to the destructive claims of gender confusion advocates, there are exclusively and only two genders and they are determined exclusively and only by one's X and/or Y chromosome combination.
So, say we all.
Drug consumption, bodily mutilation, fantasies, or desires will alter this biological blueprint. Even in the extremely rare, almost nonexistent tragic genetic deformity resulting in someone being a hermaphrodite, it is still not a third gender, but rather a combination of both genders in the male-female binary. These are the irrefutable and unavoidable, obvious scientific facts, not opinions. If any so-called expert disagrees, I again extend my ongoing challenge for you to publicly come forward and logically and scientifically justify your claim. I haven't had any takers yet, nor do I ever expect to. I strongly teach this school board and implore you to make the undeniably right decision and pass a clear policy forbidding boys from invading girls' sports and robbing the best female athletes of their duly-recognized achievements and victories. Consequently, also protecting our girls from perverts, predators, abusers, and mediocre male athletes, stealing for themselves awards that they've neither earned nor deserved. And to further secure this policy from semantic chicanery, define male and female exclusively and only by their biological sex, not imaginary identities or assignments. Follow science, common sense, and decency, not delusions, degeneracy, and stolen ownership. This also needs to be followed up in the future concerning restroom policies as well. If you on this board can't even make such an obvious, correct decision on this issue, then you can't be trusted with your involvement in anything pertaining to minors. God bless and have a good evening.
Casey, that's what we're talking. Casey, that's what we're talking about, Casey. Absolutely. Like he's got a great shirt on. The only thing that would have been better if he'd have worn a Boiling Point Podcast shirt on, but great. Oh, and they're adjourned. Wow, that was fast.
Yeah, they always adjourn very quickly.
Brandy, I'm sorry, that was fast.
Yeah, they always do that.
That was fast. Wow. Like, yes, she goes, like Kelly gets when it's at the end, she adjourns quickly, but that was fast, fast. She did, she was not letting anybody speak up or, or any kind of
Nope.
Holler after that one was over. She's like, yeah, we're adjourned.
Yep.
So, yeah. So there's that meeting. They want to approve the, the swimming pool. Now, thanks for tuning in to Celeste. I was just saying to Christie earlier, I don't know how long you've been watching, but I, we need to get the word out there for, uh, we need to get some more, uh, parents tuning into the Boiling Point Podcast for these. Instead of tuning into the website. But, uh, yeah, so we saw them, they're gonna check about the pool. They approved to, to just look, uh, you know, to get like a bit, like a reasonable bit. So, uh, that was one of the big things. It took a lot of debates. Uh, there's a lot of discussion on it, which I think there should have been. It's, I think, I think that's exactly what it should have been. Uh, I don't think that they should approve it once they get there. I don't know that your school district can afford that right now.
I don't think we can either, but you know.
It's never stopped, it's never stopped your school board before.
Nope. Nope.
This was the last one for February, right? Like we're done until we go to March now.
Yeah.
Uh, 20th and 27th?
I'm not sure. Give me one second to pull it back up here.
If I'm not mistaken, it's going to be the 20th and 27th of March when the next school board meetings are. I will do
It is, so there's a board curriculum meeting, the 12th. The 13th is finance. The 13th is also a board meeting.
Oh, so it's the 13th and 20th then?
And then a transportation committee meeting on the 18th and a policy meeting on the 20th.
Oh, just a policy meeting. No school board meeting? Only one school board meeting?
It's not listed.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Maybe we'll try and cover the policy meeting. We'll see how that goes.
Oh, yes, down here below that one, because I guess they ran out of space in the block. But yes, March 20th, it does say that there is a board meeting.
Okay, so the 13th and 20th is the school board meetings for March. We will, uh, we'll likely be able to, we're going to do the live watch-alongs with those, just like we've been doing. Just to keep giving people information and helping people understand things. This one, even, I don't know how it got there from the pool, but it was really a lot of, uh, I guess that's coming up though, the, the, the policy on boys and girls' sports.
Yes, it was in the policy meeting today.
Earlier today, that was before the school board meeting. So, uh, I'd like to try and cover the policy meetings, but that's a lot for me to try and take on too. That's like another, it's another potential hour, hour and a half on top of the two hours and 15 minutes I've already been going. So they do broadcast the policy meetings on the West Shore District website.
As far as I know, they do. And it's really hard to hear them because they don't use microphones.
Yeah, you can always see it. You can always watch it there, but try and tune into the Boiling Point Podcast whenever you can. We are going to be covering these school board meetings every month. So Brandy, I am definitely going to try, we're going to talk after this episode is over. I'm going to see the message. Uh, yes, I'm going to pitch Brandy very hard to join the Boiling Point Podcast team. Uh, cause she was essential in tonight's, uh, live watch-along. So I very much appreciate the help. It's a lot, it's, it's hard for me to look up information while I'm making sure everything else, there's comments, you know what I mean?
Right.
Lot going on to try and also do that stuff too on top of it. So I very much appreciate the assist.
Not a problem.
So I'm going to talk to her and get her to join the team. And until, um, I guess next month then, I assume, or I'm going to reach out to Mariana. Mariana's not been feeling well. She's been under the weather. I'm going to see if, I imagine she'll be doing another one of her watchdog reports.
Yeah.
Feeling better. And as soon as she is feeling better, I'm going to see if we can maybe get her on to do an episode in between, uh, between this meeting and the next school board meeting. Maybe we can get Mariana on to talk and some of the other parents on to chat about some stuff.
Yeah, she wants to do one with me too, about the lawsuit, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to get her to do more of her stuff under the Boiling Point Podcast with the, with her new show, The Watchdog Report, which she actually, she, she called her, I think she, it was her first live, it was her first recording, I think, um, her joining the team and using the software. And she, she had the title Watchdog Report with Mariana Reed. And I said, yep, that's the name of your new show. So we're working on logos and branding and all of that for her Watchdog Report series, which I'm sure she'll be back as soon as she's feeling better. And we're going to try and get her on to do an episode in between to talk about it. And Brandy, try and get Brandy on and who, and some other people to hopefully come on and maybe do this. And who knows, maybe even Sandra will just host it herself. You guys won't even necessarily need my, need my help, so.
Right?
Yeah, I, I, I'm completely fine with that. Yeah. I mean, yeah, do you know how awesome it is to have shows, like to have shows that carry my flag, but I don't have to necessarily be
Right.
Holding your hand to do it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like that's, it's, it's awesome for me. I think it's amazing. I love how far I've been able to build the Boiling Point Podcast to, to reach this point now where we have people joining us and wanting to do shows. And because they don't know how, or they don't have the logistics taken care of or, or anything else, you know, that's what we're here for. So if you have a show that you want to do and you can't figure it out or can't do it all yourself, reach out to us and join the team. We're looking to grow and expand, though I can't possibly be in any more places at once than I am.
Trust me, as a mom, I wish I could be in more than one place at once.
I, absolutely. Yeah, like I
Extra arms.
I, I talk about, I talk about how I've, with the podcasting and stuff, I've done a good job of creating the illusion that I'm in more than one place at a time, but I've yet to actually successfully be in two places at once. No matter how hard I try, I just can't seem to separate myself from myself so that I can be in two places at once.
It'd be wonderful.
And for moms, I can't even imagine. So I have a nephew and he's just my nephew and I go nuts. That's, it drives me nuts. I had to mute myself for a couple of minutes during this episode because he came home and it was crazy, chaos.
I was actually surprised when, when they came home and the dog didn't actually bark. He's ridiculous.
The dog, hey, the, the dog's, uh, the dog's already joining the Boiling Point Podcast team. He knew that
Yeah, he did last time too. He slept on the couch. This time he slept in his cage.
Ah ha, see? All right. He's part of the team. I can't wait to meet him sometime too. Well, that's going to be all that we're going to have for now, uh, because Mariana wasn't feeling good and I didn't talk to Christie or anybody else about joining us for too much of a, of a post-show. And Denise is not feeling well either. So it's obviously going around. Take care of yourself. Take some vitamins. Take some vitamins and then we'll talk to you hopefully between now and the next school board meeting, but worst case, we will, uh, see you for the next school board meeting.
All right.
So thank you, Brandy. And for everybody else, I am your host JD. Hit that like, share button, leave us comments and all that stuff. Spread the word. Until next time, that's the end.